Need to order six o'clock, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, do I hear a motion to call to adopt the agenda?
Make the motion to adopt the agenda, I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda for town council minutes April twenty twenty-one and financials for March and April twenty twenty-one?
I'll make the motion to adopt the consent agenda, I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, public comment period. Do you have anybody here for public comment? Ginger?
Yes, so, um, today was a record day, write it down on the calendar, there's a lot of, you know, the Warner Creek Correctional Facility save, and then we also got notification today that, SCA had received a second round of three-year funding for the Brown Fields project. And that will possibly, because we've already got a grant, we may possibly be able to start drawing down funds in July. It actually is not supposed to start until, or until October. But it looks really good for things that we have planned to do and anything, you know, else that will come along for the next three years. So it's an assessment grant for Phase One and Phase Two assessments, and then there's also a very large community development component this time for both Lakeview and Phase Two. So it's, it's, that, that was really good news. The other thing is I wanted to let you know that the first Friday event on Friday was a good success. There were a lot of people there. Um, the only really negative was that it, the temperature dropped about twenty degrees in fifteen minutes, about eight o'clock, and everybody packed up and went home an hour early. It was very cold, but it really went well, so we just wanted to make sure you knew that. And thanks to the court, um, and to the courthouse in, um, Lake County for letting us use the courthouse lawn, it worked out really well. And then, uh, also to let you know that the downtown beautification and the public spaces grant that LCP wrote to, um, Travel Oregon was funded at the full amount of the request. So we will probably be receiving the funds within the next two weeks, and then we can start ordering everything, and we'll have a planning meeting and figure out how we're gonna roll it all out. So, thank you all very much for all the hard work that led into it, and that's all I've got.
Alright, anybody else? Okay, we will move on to the department reports. Town Manager Michelle Perry?
Um, I've been sick, so I have no report. I'm still trying to get my feet underneath me. This is today and yesterday. I have been in contact though with, um, the EDA, the, um, commission or the committee director to resubmit our application for, um, not only the North Water Extension, but for our water facility. Um, because there's got another round of funding coming at the end of this month. So I'm talking to him about what would help places into a successful, um, effort. So we can go back and forth with him today.
How much was it?
Like that?
How much was it, like, the grant?
Um, the one that was rejected was for seven hundred and sixty thousand. Um, so I'm trying to bundle them together, um, and to see if that's gonna have us have more success, and we adopted our city goals, which aligns better with the EDA and with our own wat- matter, water master plan. So, um, I'm hopeful, the governor did make mention today that she's gonna put a, our fifteen million dollar water treatment facility plan into an economic development package to send to the senate to vote. And I'm, I'm so grateful, so grateful for that. So we'll see, I mean, I'm trying to have multiple avenues that we can head down to take the burden off the town as much as possible.
So if you get that, we could move ahead on the water treatment?
That's correct. Um, we're, one of the things that's holding us up on the water treatment plant is that our audit has yet to be completed. And that is within days of completion, that way then we can move forward with that. It's holding us up on water treatment, the four hundred thousand for nine one one, and a USDA grant for the fire nine one one for sixty thousand. So we're just, I'm bottlenecking right now.
Yep, some bad bird.
Just a question, did you, did you apply for fifteen million for water treatment? Or is that, is that a new number that you haven't heard before?
Well, I did apply.
You did apply, okay, 'cause Christmas valentine applied for a similar number too, so just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, you know, I, um, I just took into account that it was ten million. And if I'm gonna ask for something, I'd rather ask for a little bit more than have it coming less and give it back into, than have to scramble for a hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, Joe Marshall, how about this?
Well, I, I did give out a little report there, that's all pretty regular stuff. And today was kind of a day of curveballs. We, uh, were real excited to start on the swimming pool. Uh, electrician got all of his parts delivered up there today, and the rovers showed up at the same time. We'll start with, with Hi-Ded or Electric, they got their panels, we carried them in where they need to be, started unboxing everything. The panels were all empty, they didn't have all the components inside of them, so he said he could be looking at another few days to get those. They told him they were coming right behind the original order. He said once the power goes off, he's gonna have the power off for seven to ten days. Well, that's getting really close on the amount of time I'm gonna need to get the pool balanced and, and up and running, so I told him I might possibly wanna hold off on the project until after the swim season. And then he took a look around, he said, no, I don't think he will. He, he looked at all the mostly the conduits that were going over there, the seventy-year-old conduits, and he said he was sticking his thumb through them everywhere, so he said it would be not in our best interest to put the project off, so he said he'll do everything he can to work weekends to get it done when he gets his parts. Uh, so worst-case scenario would be putting off the opening of the pool till a week later, so but I don't know how that's gonna impact your training days.
I will make it work. I will do my level best to make it work.
Okay, so, so that's not too easy of an issue. We may, it's not, we'll push the opening off a week.
It might be going to a lake, which I could do.
Yeah, it's like there's no water, yeah. It's gonna be a shallow lake. And, and the other big curveball we got today was the roofers started on the pool, and they tore all the outside edges off. They got over to the edge near the mountainside, they found where a few rocks had rolled down the hill some time ago and hit that, uh, did some damage, and but they're no longer comfortable with proceeding the way it was, so I called Rob Thornton and his crew to go out and take a look. And he was not comfortable with just patching something together either, so he wants an engineer to look at it, anyone?
Have, have we talked to our insurance company about that?
No.
I, I think that's the route we need to go.
Well, the, the issue is not so much the original damage, but some dry rock that happened as a result of it.
Yeah, but if it's a result of the damage, then the insurance company should pick that up.
Absolutely, yeah, I, I would, I would file a claim. That's a, that's like an act of God-type thing, or a weather revenge or something else like that, so absolutely.
I would find out whether you have to fully, I didn't talk to any of the rippers.
Yeah.
Find out, 'cause what they'll do is they'll bring, they'll bring an estimator over, look at it, figure out what needs to be done.
Okay. So do we still, we'll still need an engineer to, to design a plan?
That's all the insurance, the insurance company will handle it.
Okay, so I'm not sure how many days that'll take, but, uh, if the roofers have to completely mow it out and go to another project, then we could be looking at, you know, at least a mobilization, start it on them, it's still gonna be cheaper, yeah. The mobilization on the roofers, that is to pay
Yeah, 'cause you get it.
the engineer and all of it, everybody to come in and fix that, so we need to talk to the insurance company.
Sure. And if you don't let the insurance company deal with it first, then they don't cover you. They have the right.
Yeah, there's problems down the road, don't worry.
Yep.
Okay, so we need to get all of it. I'll get, I'll get with them first things off.
Okay.
So, bad luck with the pool, get all the bad luck out of the way, recover it this season. It'll be a great season after that, yeah, yeah. So that was about all I had.
Um, are the same roofers gonna do the roof down?
Yeah, they actually pulled off this afternoon and went down there, and they're gonna be probably finished with that tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Yeah, I heard the superintendent of the school is working on a grant to buy every kid in school a pass.
Wow, he did twenty, he did twenty thousand dollars.
Yeah, for the, so every kid in the school would have a pass, so that'd really help all of us, I think.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Yeah, it'll help the county, maybe.
And then engineering, fire, and nine one one are not here, but they do present reports in new packets, except for ninety-one, I will get back to them soon. And then, all the business, the Northern Water Project, did we even hear anything else on that, even though Michelle covered most of it?
Um, I, I just wanna ask council if we're gonna postpone the North Water Extension because the, the key was so high. It was seven hundred and sixty, and it came in at one point one million.
We're gonna have to postpone because we don't see what we're gonna make up that difference in that possible project.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that that was the direction you wanted to go.
Yeah.
Okay, big folks. New business, Brad Winters, President of Warner Mountain Gun Club, John McRae, an update, please.
I'm on the other side. Just information, that's one of our applications, and, uh, just to give a update, uh, I wanted to touch base. I've been the president of the Warner Mountain Gun Club since, uh, first of the year. It's a partnership, as you guys well know, it's, uh, city property, that we have a lease agreement with the city. Uh, the information I gave you there, uh, the twenty-second, we're okay to twenty-two shoot, we're trying to create all the activity we can up there, just let you guys know, so that fire is there. Also, uh, for Dom, if you could make some copies of the application, if that's allowed for them to be out here in the lobby, would be really appreciated. Our memberships were strong, we're about a hundred and eighty right now. Our membership's only twenty-five dollars, uh, for a membership. Uh, we try to keep that low all the way back from when it first originated, just so people have opportunity. You get a membership, you get a tee, you can go up there and shoot anytime, it's on, you follow the rules and everything, all the rules are on that.
Is that a one-time or is that yearly?
It's a yearly, it's, uh, January first every year.
So Brad, do the kids need to pay as well, like, if we're taking them up to teaching?
So if, if you're a member, you can take guests with you, that can under your supervision.
Okay.
And that, um, it's, we don't have a family membership, uh, we do individuals, um, so that, that's what it is. The shoot, the fire doesn't stay there, the kids shoot for free on the twenty-second. Wanted to talk a little bit about the contract that will end on December thirty-first of twenty twenty-three. I know it's early. Um, very successful up there. I look forward to, uh, whoever's the president, time come before the council wanted to extend that. So I just wanted to put that bug out there and let you guys know the improvements have been done up there as far as rifle side of it. We're getting ready to hopefully this summer work on the pistol range side of it, which is, you know, a smaller oning, similar to the rifle side. Uh, we had a workday here on the tenth, very successful workday. We put an archway up, nicer gates, that helps complement, like, the trails up there and everything like that. Had some people walking by and they said, wow, that's really nice that people are doing something, so it just helped complement that part of our community. It's so close to town that it just, that I guess I'm at a point that makes you feel good in heart to have people walk by and say that. For everybody here, for the press, uh, you can join online, that's one of the easiest ways. Go to Warner Mountain Gun Club dot org, if anybody's interested, if the public's interested. Uh, another thing we do up there is weed control. We do, uh, weed management. We partner up with Warner Creek Correctional Facility and woo-hoo, prison's staying open, that's great. So we, we, uh, partner with them. We will probably be doing a certain amount of, uh, chemical, uh, use up there over the next few years also. We will do that with a licensed contractor, just to protect the town, protect the, the club. So it's done right, injury and that kind of stuff. So, uh, this fall, we may be doing a little bit of chemical up there on that by licensed contractor. I just, uh, would like to ask, and just put it out there, I, I don't mean to get, uh, he is a member, uh, on on the line here or whatever, but if we have a workday up there, would the council consider very rarely if we needed to use a piece of equipment with a, a town volunteer, they volunteers like to run the backhoe for a little bit, smooth enough some gravel. Nothing major, anything like that. I don't need an answer right now, I just want to put it out there. If, if Jeff or one of his crew members is volunteering, if we have a workday and we need some things promoted or travel to move out. Um, I used my backhoe this last time, um, not, not a problem, but it's just, uh, trying to build that relationship, that partnership. And I know he's very busy, so, sorry to put you on the spot.
It would be on a weekend.
It would be on the weekend, so, um, that's pretty much what I just sort of jotted down. I just wanted to, to get in here and touch base with the council. I'm the, the club's already the president, there's new people on the council, um, so questions of me if I can answer. Alright, I will get out here and let you guys get through the rest of your, thank you for your time.
Thanks, Brad.
Brad, Brad.
Oh, you're Brad. You're going there, Brad. Thank you.
Do you have an extra copy of the flyer? I'll have to come and shoot in a second.
I so happen to.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brad.
Okay. There, BFW, uh, twen- is asking for a twenty-five dollar donation per year to enable the, um, to put a flag up at town hall. Um, everybody received a letter. Jim, do you wanna?
They want a twenty-five dol- dollar donation, like, just?
Yeah, they usually just ask for a donation to hang a flag every year.
So, I'll read it. Veterans of Foreign War, slain for post forty-seventy is proud to be part of the community of Lakeview and happy to give back to our community if we are equal. Their service, uh, service that we're most proud of is assisting the community to show our pride in our great nation on select holidays by exploding the American flag. Your donation of twenty-five dollars per year will enable us to set up a flag to be honored in a location of your choosing. Please remember that the intent of this service is to honor our nation's flag, and as such, we will not be placing flags in disrespectful locations or in inclement weather. If you're interested in taking advantage of the service, please come, contact George Middleton, four one seven zero two zero, zero two two zero, or David Swart at two one nine zero five nine six.
So this we always will have to make a motion on?
I'll make a motion to approve, I know a donation would be. I second that.
Did you have a?
Well, I was just gonna say, I think the Knights of Columbus could donate a hundred dollars if, and I'll put it down.
Okay.
Part town and part Knights of Columbus.
Okay.
So I think we could do that, and that way we, you wouldn't have to get involved really, the city. I'll put the city's name down on it. Is that okay?
I, I think they're looking for multiple locations, I mean, the.
Is there more flags we can get out?
Yeah.
Well, I'll put it at auction.
Okay.
And then, resolution one zero one one, declaring surplus properties.
After all the.
Yes, it is.
In the back.
Those things are all of an value, they use same for everything.
Yeah, they're in heaps, yeah. A lot of classic equipment, that would be our classic equipment, yeah.
Going up in value.
Well, that one definitely did, because we only paid the county a dollar for it when we got it. There you go. Do you need a motion?
Yes, I do.
I make a motion, the past resolution one zero one one has written, I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution one zero one two, renumbering ordinances. There were some ordinances that, when I went through the ordinance book, that were not, that were still not numbered correctly. So I talked to town manager Michelle Perry and asked her if I could do the due diligence to rewrite this and to renumber all ordinances from eight fifty-seven on to current.
And she based her resolution on the one we had done earlier, so it's, it, this is exactly one the council seen before, but same reason there was a couple of hiccups, I think probably in between, um, different, but that was, eight fifty-seven was before your time, yeah, so it's something that needs, it's a housekeeping thing, and the resolution is the appropriate way to do it. Don't want an ordinance doing it, that's why it's not a resolution, renumber things, so it's just a clerical.
Make a motion to pass resolution number one zero one two, has written.
Seconded it.
Next, a resolution, what? Oh, sorry, oh, do I?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, thank you, sorry.
I was thinking about.
Resolution one zero one three, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an addendum to the municipal affluent and water service agreement with Red Rock File Fuel LLC. Is this one we can still vote on?
Yes.
Yes.
This basically was the loan increase that, first Michelle.
That's correct.
Because when the job was initially bid, I'll give you a little background on it. When the job initially bid, it was over each investment. We did not adjust the loan to meet that, we were gonna do that at the end of the loan to make sure we only had to adjust the loan one time. I have gone over the numbers with, uh, Jeff and Mr. Anderson, and it's what we need to do.
And another good piece I noticed is, well, Michelle, I've had a conversation with Mr. Mannernack, and Red Rock's expecting to pay that for the first loan installment in June, July, so that's gonna start getting repaid back.
So I'll make a motion to pass resolution number one zero one three, has your.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now to Autumn, presentation of Smoke Management Community Planning and Mitigation Grant Agreement between DEQ and Lake County.
Thanks. You wanna just sit here, is that okay?
You can sit wherever you want.
Well, thanks so much for having me. Um, so just real quick, I'll just tell you, my name's Autumn Muir. And normally I am the uplands coordinator for the Lake County Umbrella Watershed Council. But since we are independent contractors, we are able to take on other tasks and jobs, and so um, the county actually reached out to me back in January and, um, asked if I would be willing to take on this project, um, and I said yes, and so this is just an update for you guys of what this is, where we're at, and it's really important because the town is a co-signer on this document. Um, so we've been having meetings, and then I can discuss that as we go forward, but I apologize that this is the first time that you've heard about it, um, at, in, in that it's almost finished now. Um, although we have invited, um, people to the meetings and the mayor and, um, just, it's been such a busy time, and so I understand that you couldn't reach it. But, um, so, yeah, if you wanna just go through that, this is, um, this is a grant that the county, Lake County, and the town of Lakeview got from the Department of Environmental Quality. I'm gonna take my mask off, otherwise I'll. So this is to update, um, the Smoke Management Community Planning and Mitigation. So the grant came through in early twenty twenty, and it was for thirty-five thousand dollars. Now I wanna make sure that I'm clear that this grant is only for the planning component, it is not for implementation. The deadline for the grant completion is this Saturday, May fifteenth, so go ahead. And the objectives of the grant, and there's several. So the first objective is that all of the organizations, agencies understand the purpose, the structure of the, the, um, community planning and the protocol for the plan developed and established. So that requires partnership, outreach, and coordination. Next, we need to host input sessions with the community and have discussions with other partners to inform them on the development of the community response plan. So this, of course, was very difficult due to COVID. Um, so actually, DEQ gave us a little bit of leeway and allowed us to do some virtual things and to do some surveys to get the input that we needed, since we couldn't really have meetings where the community was invited and present. The next one was to host the inter-agency, uh, Community Response Plan Partnership Roundtable Discussions. And that's what we've been doing, um, and that's what we invited folks to. Um, and so that is what was called the core team discussion as well. So that was required, you had to have X number of people attend, um, for it to count as a discussion and a meeting. Lastly, develop the community response plan consistent with OAR, so that involved drafting and formalizing the community response plan. Um, and then the implementation of the Lake County Smoke Mitigation HEPA Filter Distribution Program. So this was something that we did a few weeks ago. Um, I organized the Lakeview Smoke Sensitive Recept- Receptor Area HEPA Filter Distribution Program. We had a HEPA Distribution Day at the fairgrounds when we did some demonstrations, we had educational material, and we gave away three HEPA filters to people who were qualified. Okay, so where we're at right now, our accomplishments, since the end of January twenty twenty-one, when I came on, we posted four roundtable discussions, called virtual, either Zoom or Microsoft Teams meetings, uh, distributed a survey for public input, ordered a hundred and five HEPA units and replacement filters, a hundred and five replacement filters as well. Posted the distribution day, we were able to establish two new clean airspaces. Formerly, we did not really have any clean airspaces identified in the town of Lakeview. Um, so we worked with the senior center and the library, and then, of course, the big beast in the room is compiling this document. So I'm gonna just kind of go over the components of the document. So the first piece is the rationale for why the Lakeview Smoke Sensitive Receptor Area Community Response Plan is necessary. And in this, basically, there's descriptions of, you know, where Lakeview is at, our topography, our climate, our weather. And then there's a pretty good section about historical background, talking about the human activities over the past hundred and fifty years, um, how fire suppression and the past management practices have altered the structure of our, of our, and the composition of our landscape and, um, the disturbance regimes of our dry forest. So basically, the impetus of this community response plan is to discuss that we need to reintroduce and maintain fuels reductions with fire as an ecological process. So, um, this is probably where it made most sense that I got tied into this, being on the Lake County Umbrella Watershed Council and a member of the Climate and Forest Health Partnership, we have been working on ongoing efforts related to. on ongoing efforts related to reducing, reintroducing fire on the landscape, so lots of juniper thinning, cutting, piling, burning, and we're wanting to get prescribed burning, you know, reintroduced. So then I talk about those projects, um, in the document, North Warner, Thomas Creek. Those are projects of the Watershed Council and NRCS have worked on. Um, we are going to be putting in for a large grant this January called the Lake County All Lands Restoration Initiative, which will combine North Warner and Thomas Creek. We're also going to include South Warner, which is our next landscape. Um, and then we've got the Summer Lake area identified as well. Okay, so, um, with all that above planning effort, the town of Lakeview and Lake County need to submit this community response plan to ODF and DEQ. And the reason that, one of the reasons, not only is it a really great thing for a community to have, but it is a necessary requirement to have an adopted community response plan to be able to formally request under the Oregon Strategic Fire and Smoke Management Plan for an exemption from the one hour smoke intrusion threshold. And I'll, I'll kind of get into that just a little bit more detail further on. So I think this is the important part, though, that I really wanna make sure I get across to you guys, that it is absolutely critical to local, state and national initiatives that are already underway in South Central Oregon to increase the strategic forest restoration and prescribed fire treatments. Um, especially in regards to the wild carbon interface. So this map, and it's a little bit hard for you to see maybe, but I wanted to throw it up here because this really puts into perspective why it's so important. So the red outlines there are all of the, what we call large landscape scale wildfires that we've had in the last say twenty years or so. So you can see Lakeview there, it's kind of in the middle, lower middle in yellow. The yellow is the smoke sensitive receptor area, which is just a little bit larger than the city limits. And the purple are all of the project areas that I discussed, the North Warner, Thomas Creek, Summer Lake, up to the north, South Warner. Those are places where the Forest Service and private land through the Watershed Council are planning projects. So forest health projects that will address, you know, overstory, understory, um, thinning components, cutting, piling, burning those piles, and then eventually getting back to prescribed burning. And all of this is to basically get us back into a normal fire cycle and to hopefully reduce the potential for catastrophic wildfires. And I'll take questions at any point too, if anyone has anything, so. But, um, there are four state required components that must be in every, um, community response plan. So first, you have to describe the populations in your community that are vulnerable to the health effects of short-term smoke. And those people are categorized this way, so it's either persons with asthma or chronic respiratory diseases such as CLPD or emphysema, persons with cardiovascular disease, persons sixty-five years of age or older, infants and children under fifteen, pregnant women, and then smokers, especially those who have smoked for several years. And then so there's a big breakdown, tables and such in the document of, of, you know, the demographics of our community um, that fit those categories. So the second one is adequate means by which the public, especially those vulnerable populations, can be notified in a clear and reliable way of anticipated smoke impacts in a timely manner. So right now, we already have the Alert Sense messaging system. Um, and we're going to be hopefully increasing the use of that and getting more people signed up through that system. Um, we basically, anyone that came to get a HEPA unit during the HEPA Distribution Day, we gave them the information to sign up. I couldn't quite make it a requirement, but it was heavily encouraged that they, they do that because basically then, you know, we can send them a text, a voicemail or email, whichever they decide to tell them, hey, there's gonna be a prescribed fire north of town, the smoke will probably be coming in and impacting town. Turn on your HEPA filter, close your windows, things like that. The third one is adequate options for protecting the health of vulnerable populations. So trying to, um, basically educate folks on how to protect themselves from these short-term exposures to smoke and, and how to identify the symptoms of, of smoke exposure and recommendations to minimize impacts. And then the fourth one is the plan and program for communications between the entities that conduct a prescribed fire. So that includes the local public, public authority, the communities public, and the vulnerable populations who may be impacted by the smoke. So this is kind of a, a really missing link that we have here in our community. We do have a current, uh, website with SCAPUM, the South Central Oregon Fire Management Partnership, but we feel that it is not as user-friendly as it could be. And we, um, in our survey that we sent out, a lot of people don't even know about it, didn't know to look there for, as a resource. So we are going to be proposing a complete revamp to this site to, uh, make it more user-friendly, have more available resources and, and hopefully get a better communication to our, to our individuals in our community. So what we want this site to be is like a one-stop shop for important information, key messaging, the recommendations. And those recommendations will address, okay, so why, what's the purpose, why is prescribed fire important? Why is it essential to make our forests healthier and our communities safer? When and where is prescribed fire planned? So this is where that advanced notification comes in, people can see that there will be a prescribed fire and the smoke that is expected from that. Strategies employed to reduce emissions from the prescribed fire, so, you know, just informing people what is being done to minimize that smoke uh, during prescribed fires. And then the health impacts of all the smoke sources. And so basically, you know, a link to either DEQ or a BPA or the air quality index and knowing when it's, uh, potentially dangerous to you depending on the rating of the air quality index. And then, of course, the recommendations to reduce that exposure. So basically, what can you do to protect yourself? Close your windows, stay inside, turn your HEPA filter on, wear a mask, um, there's a whole list of, of activities. Okay, so additional components, um, there is a very in-depth, uh, section in the community response plan about fire, smoke and air quality analysis that's mostly taken from our nephelometer that we have here at it's at Center Street and M Street. Um, and so that's been recording data for a long time, so I was able to pull quite a bit of information from that. So there's talk about prescribed fire, smoke and air quality, and then there's talk about wildfire, smoke and air quality. Um, and of course, those are very different and we can't control wildfire, especially non-local wildfires. As you know, we get impacted from fires from California, Nevada, other states. So we're just really trying to focus on the things that we can control, which is prescribed fire, smoke. Um, there's a section about the National Ambient Air Quality Standards or NACS, and that is all related to particulate matter at two-point-five level. And then the comparison between wildfire, smoke and prescribed fire, smoke as I stated before. And then there's an annual reporting component to this document. So I have a whole bunch of penises and that's most of what makes this document as large as it is, it's about a hundred and forty-nine pages. The document itself is only about twenty-nine. But the, the penises are the KLFHP, the Climate Lake Forest Health Partnership, Forest Health Restoration Achievements and Future Plans, maps, we've got all the survey questions and all of the results in there. Um, I've included sample press releases from the Forest Service and SCAPUM. Um, there is a smoke brochure, which is an educational kind of document from Oregon Department of Forestry. We've got all our HEPA Distribution Day documents, the announcement, the application, and then all the instructions and um, Alert Sense information that went out with those folks. I also referred a few times to the already existing Lakeview Area Particulate Matter Advanced Action Plan. That was, um, something you guys did back in two thousand fourteen. So I was able to reference that and point to that this has already been acknowledged as an issue and we are working and striving to move forward to make it a better uh, air quality community. Um, and then there was a really great, uh, memorandum of understanding between DEQ, Lake County, the town of Lakeview and the US Forest Service and the Viam district, and that was, um, that document came from two thousand nineteen, and so that's a really great document as well that shows the collaboration in this community between all partners that are working towards a common goal. Um, and then we have just a, a really general partner list in there that, um, says which, which, uh, person, not by name, but by position is responsible or representative from which agency and a phone number. And probably the most important for this group here is the, um, implementation assignments. So to be, um, in compliance with this community response plan, we have to do annual reporting and we have to have people that are assigned to do that, otherwise they'll just kind of get lost in the shuffle. So go ahead, next. Okay, so that's a very quick run-through of the last four months of my life. Um, but I'd be happy to answer questions and dive into anything that you have deeper. Um, so I'll just let you ask questions first and then maybe Barry and I can talk about a few more specifics.
So just to comment, um, you know, the town of Lakeview and county has been working for quite a while now to, um, not get into non-attainment status as far as smoke and our air quality. And it's something that we have battled, you know, the last several years, we're working with DEQ to do really well. Um, with that in mind, and all, and you saw the map of basically from Cockwood all the way around us here. Um, of all the prescribed fire and potential burning that needs to happen on the forest in the next several years ahead. Um, the forest doesn't want to hinder the town or the community by messing up the, uh, non-attainment stats. Okay, so this one hour exemption, in the event that it happens, uh, and smoke comes to town, will help protect the town of Lakeview. And that's, that's really what we're trying to do.
Right, so, so just a little bit more detail on that, so right now, there's a twenty-four hour threshold that we are held to for smoke intrusions. Um, and in, since like two thousand seven to two thousand twenty, we've only had five that, and they didn't even go over the threshold, but they got close. And so that would lead you to believe that, well, you know, we really don't even need a one-hour exemption because in the last, you know, thirteen years, we've only gotten close to the twenty-four hour five times, but that's why I put that map up about really needing to increase the pace and scale and really needing to not, we need as much flexibility as possible to be able to do more prescribed burning to prevent wildfire, smoke. Because, you know, a few months in the spring, in the fall, of some controlled smoke events is a lot better than sitting here all summer, you know, with a wildfire, smoke layer, as you all know. So the, the crux of this whole document, from our perspective, um, is we, we had to do this document to be able to apply for the one-hour exemption. And that's what this community needs in order to increase the pace and scale of forest health restoration, prescribed burning. And really, it's kind of a long game of protecting the community.
So questions? So the DEQ's been working with us, just like we've been working with, um, them in our normal air quality meetings, uh, that some of you may have been attending, and I know some of you have attended a lot of them. Uh, they've been there step by step with us and, uh, we'll see, we'll see what happens, but, uh, we do need the town of Lakeview to be a cosigner and supporter of it in order for us to be successful. In order to keep going.
Right.
So who does that, Michelle?
It's the mayor.
Mayor, the mayor, right?
Yep.
What, what does that put us liable for, by being a cosigner?
It doesn't, if they grant the exemption, then it helps us stay out of non-attainment, so you're not liable for anything, this is actually relaxing certain requirements.
Yeah.
So that would be prescribed burning, then closer to whatever, it doesn't count against our, um, two-point-five standard stuff.
Uh, Ben got this, Ashlyn got this, did LaGrande.
No, Wala.
Wala. There's different communities that have done this and, uh, Ben's, you know, they're, they're trying to do some burning a little close to the hour now.
Right, now they are.
Yeah. So it's got, you know, uh, it's got them protected from that one hour.
And if some, and if for some reason the town ever wanted on its stuff up the canyon, wanted to add fire as a previous strategy after thing or whatever you guys wanna do, that would, then when you guys, if you so desire, add that as a, a management strategy for what you guys threw up there, otherwise, yeah, would not, without that waiver there, I would never suggest to me that on your property of their, it should be really tough to keep that, without that waiver.
Another, another thing that everybody needs to know, fire managers, they get a smoke forecast from ODF. They have to request a smoke forecast before they light a prescribed burn. And it, let's say we're burning out here at Thomas Creek and it shows that we're gonna get a north wind and it's gonna point right at town. Well, that's a no-burn case. Okay, smoke management's discouraging you from burning because it's gonna go right to a smoke-sensitive receptor area such as Lakeview. And so they're not gonna burn. Now, they get the, put in the same request and it shows it's gonna go towards Silver Lake or it's gonna go, you know, towards Shemold, off to the northwest. That's a burn day, you know, and, but as we all know, the wind changes around here. And it can start going to the northwest and by the end of the day, it's coming all the way to the south. Another thing that we found out back in two thousand ten, when we burned up Thomas Creek, uh, doing prescribed burning up there in the fall, that at night, smoke likes to come back down into Goose Lake. And it'll follow through Thomas Creek proper right down. It generally didn't, uh, ever exceed the town of Lakeview, but, uh, it was pretty smoky out in the valley in two thousand ten, so. Those are some of the things we learned from that.
So I understood that you guys were looking for a house for this, for someone to house this document and to keep track of the reports that you would be done and.
Right, so what, what we did, we were kind of struggling at the end here, you know, we have all these great ideas and plans and we say these things, but who will really do them? So that's why we added an appendix, which is that implementation assignments, basically. And so we kind of, in a table form, identified all the things that need to happen um, to fulfill this document, either as in, we don't have the website set up the way that we want, so we're going to propose to hopefully use some Title III funding, to be able to hire a new web designer, so we've got things identified. Um, the town of Lakeview is identified as a responsible party on a few things, and it's mostly partnership type things like helping, uh, with press releases and, um, see, organizing, you know, maybe putting something on the, the webpage or if you have a social media, um, venue. The other piece of this is normally, a lot of the responsibility revolves with Lake County Public Health. In this, um, you know, unprecedented times with COVID, we haven't seen public health at all through this process until like the last meeting that we had. Um, because they are dealing with COVID and they are swamped and they are busy and that is the pressing need. So what the core team has basically acknowledged is that while the grant indicates these certain entities are responsible, it's a, it's a partnership. And so I think we will all be held accountable and responsible. And a lot of the information like for the annual reporting needs to come from the Forest Service or the BLM, the fire management officers anyway. So I think that it comes down to, um, the annual report technically is the responsibility of public health in the town of Lakeview. But we're, we're hearing from DEQ that there will be a potential, another grant opportunity for implementation of these type of things. So they're so new that they haven't really had to address the actual implementation. There's only been three other counties, um, and they were just recently adopted within the last few months. So, um, that's kind of the big part that we want to make sure everyone understands. But we're hoping to apply for another grant if that comes available, use some other alternative county-type fundings. Um, and as far as where it's housed, you know, I, I guess for me, you know, being the independent contractor that was hired, I've exhausted the money. It's, it's gone, um, which is great because we actually were able to purchase a bunch more HEPA filters. Um, and so we used the whole thirty-five thousand. But, um, yeah, I'm, I'm ready to pass this on to whoever is going to house it. So I don't know if it stays with the Lake County or stays here. But the town of Lakeview, that is a decision that needs to be made.
Yeah, I, I don't anticipate the town or the county really having to do a whole lot. I think that, um, fire managers on the federal side are going to help with their report, reporting. Um, but both county and the town need to be in signatures. Is that correct?
Right.
Yeah.
For this, and then, and then you, the, the next step is, so that's signing this document. And then there's another step to ask for that one-hour exemption. So just completing this doesn't mean you're asking for the one-hour exemption. It just means that you can ask for the one-hour exemption.
So you are asking council to authorize the mayor to sign this document as finishing that? Is that correct?
I think that would be accurate. Um, I am still making a few more edits, um, but I think I will have those done. I, I have to have them done by Friday. So I can give you the final, final draft and then there's some time for our signatures and submission.
So the next town meeting is, um, two weeks. So would that be related for you guys to bring it, bring a fine document back? So these guys can have the council approve it.
Yeah, we need some time to look at it.
Twenty minutes.
To bring it to us on Tuesday and when it matches by Friday is pretty tough.
I understand, but it's been, it's a delicate issue because it, we've been asking for participation for a year, actually, so, but understanding that everyone's busy. I think if we give you the final, final draft and hopefully you don't have any huge heartburn over it and you approve of it, um, and then you can vote to sign it.
I mean, as far as my personal opinion, as far as the document, we don't have a problem with that going on. The biggest issue with me being on the council and knowing what the town's going through right now is who's going to be responsible, who's going to take care of this document. Because we as a town don't have the manpower or the time right now. We have a lot of changes that are going on in town right now. That, that's one of my biggest concerns. I mean, I feel the county started it. They probably should hang on to it.
Public health.
Yeah, public health, exactly, exactly. I mean, I think it's a great program. I really do it. I think it's something that we need.
I think the outlook is going to be done by the federal agencies.
It is.
So that's very, that's going to be the biggest part of it, so.
Yeah, and the things like, um, you know, re, uh, resurveying or doing another survey. That survey's done. Like you can just literally print it off, send it out, analyze it. I mean, it doesn't take that long. And, you know, I, I don't want to stay tied to this forever, but also since I've invested so much time and I am very familiar with it, if, if there is funding to hire me back to do more work on it as an contractor, that's something that, you know.
Is ODF the, sort of the people on all this too?
Yes, yes, and also ODF and DEQ would be the reviewers of this document. So yes, we have Dustin DeStaithson and even some state-level, uh, ODF representatives there at all of the core teams.
That, that's where my opinion is. I, I have no problem with the document. What he's explained to us, I just don't see where the town has the manpower or...
We're, we're the smallest town to apply.
Really?
So in Bend or Ashland, they just hand this over to their forestry department in their town.
Makes it hard when you're small.
We don't have a forestry department.
And I, I think that's a really, a really important thing they bring up because that's a concern of public health as well. And if we're being honest, that's the concern of DEQ. I mean, those folks that have been at the, at our meetings have questioned how, how we guys do this. Yeah, so that's why we kind of went a couple of extra steps of identifying our partners and what the implementation assignment could be. None of the other documents of the other communities have that. So we were hoping that that would be, um...
They just have a department next to here, do it.
Yeah, yeah.
I wish it was that simple, but it's definitely not.
So I know that's a lot of information and I know the PowerPoint is a little bit dry, but it's, there, it's just a lot of, um, technical words that is, it was a hard document to write, I'll tell you that much, so good luck reading it. But, um, it's very important.
Yeah, I, I don't think, I mean, I definitely don't have a problem with it. My biggest concern is the, uh, the manpower. He's going to be ultimately responsible for anything in, in the community.
Well, I can get a final version to you by Friday.
We'll do our best to push it through.
Thank you very much for your time. Okay, now on to Lake Army Building Code Nuisance Enforcement Specialist.
I'm going to, um, recommend you table this.
Okay.
I found out there's more information that we've not seen yet. So I would like to table this until we get further information from Mark Ellison.
Okay.
And the county.
Is that on the nuisance officer?
Yeah. Yeah.
You made a motion.
I made a motion to table it until we get further information from the county and Mark Ellison, commissioner.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, um, Don LaClary Town Reporter regarding filing of annexations. So the process for annexations, that we are now charging them eighty dollars. Well, it should have always been eighty dollars to charge them, so the fees don't come out of the town budget. So with that being said, I am asking council if we could please make it the responsibility of the party that is wanting the annexation or the concerted annexation to please take this to the county and file it themselves. Otherwise, I'm having to take it into Shelley, ask her to please write me a check, wait for that to be done, and then I have to walk it over to the county to get it filed. This way, if the person that is asking for the annexation, if they could please just walk over their information there, get it filed, and then just bring us a copy.
I'm good with that.
Thank you. And then Jennifer Daniels for Elder Abuse Awareness Event, June sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, um, Senior Center Proclamation.
Unfortunately, Jennifer was unable to be with us because she was stepping in last minute for her. Um, I do not have a copy of the proclamation. I apologize for that.
I gave them a copy. I had one. So I, I just redamped it and put the town of Lakeview in there. Yeah, so.
So we really just want to take the opportunities and thank you to the community of Lakeview. You guys are one of the best communities that we work with with APS. Um, working with the elderly, the disabled, your community is so strong and you constantly are helping people. You've always stepped up. So we just want to thank you for that and maybe for representing the elder abuse awareness day.
So I need a motion for this. I don't know if you guys have a chance to read this proclamation?
I would suggest the amendment that, um, it should be issued by the counsel president. That's your motion. That way, it should be effective today. That's the counsel's pleasure.
So we need a motion to pass this with the amendment that it can be executed by the counsel president. I'll make a motion to move forward with the issue to be settled by the counsel president. I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Um, removal of the fifteen-minute parking space by Howard and replace it with a handicap parking space.
So I've talked to Jeff Howard about this. He's all in favor of the fifteen-minute parking spot one way. He said that was there before they ever opened. It was before it was Howard's. So he's happy to have that go away. The only thing I would say, instead of replacing the handicap parking spot there, I would put it on the corner, which is closer to the, um, the curb that's more accessible. Yeah.
I think we should wait till after the corner is redone because there's going to be so much construction over that. Most of it's painted up now and they have to go ahead.
Right, right, right. So what you guys could do is do a motion that after the, uh, all of that ODOT project is done, then the town is to reissue that at, say, um, at, at the corner spaces to remove the fifteen-minute one and then issue, as you guys stated, the handicap part of the corner. And that way you'll know all that. But you guys can definitely put a delayed date on that.
Uh, I'll motion to approve that with the adjustment of the handicap spot on the corner. At the end of the, after the end of the ODOT project, yeah. I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Thank you. And then last but not least, the discussion of the shooting of propane tanks and tamari awards evening. I turned this into, um, Sheriff Taylor. He is going to be having it patrolled a little more. It's just up past the corner, just past the little cabinets on the right-hand side. There's a pool on the left-hand side and people are shooting tamari and propane bottles. With the drives it's been, it was a huge, huge concern for...
We, we picked up two pickup loads last year, early in the year and about halfway through the summer. Another appliances.
Yeah.
Can you put cameras up there?
I mean, that's, that's what started, that's what happened in summer, like with the fire.
You were shooting tamari with fireworks and that's what started the whole fire.
Not the last thing we want. It's the town to burn down for a fourth time. So that is just something, and I did bring it to Sheriff's attention and he is going to have that patrolled.
I, I think you should put some trail cameras up there.
Okay.
Give a good idea of what's going on.
Did we buy some trail cams? We, we bought one to put in down at the Hall of Race Building just to give us an idea of when they're dumping down there. And we wanted to put one up at the, right across from the shooting range where the trails start there. But I haven't. We, we're going to get some rocks to make sure they stay in place when we put them up there.
And I would also...
Kind of, kind of a law enforcement issue. I don't really think that's probably the worst thing. I don't know when we would go up there and check them and do an investigation and, you know, nobody behind our stuff over the police. It seems like the police matter to me. But it sounds like Sheriff Taylor's going to be a bit, a little off. Okay.
You still want to get cameras?
Just wait and see.
Does anybody have anything else?
I have a quick question. Um, the ODOT project reminded me, did anyone send a letter to the vendor or to the, um, the contractor that's doing it to ask if the three intersections, um, it would be the intersection of South first, Center Street, and North first, if those, the color of the paths that go in?
I think, I think North second should be involved in that too, just so that everything went through the...
Oh, okay, okay. So it's my understanding that, um, in a historic district downtown, that they will change the color from the bright yellow to a terracotta or brick red.
Yeah, they, they actually brought it up to me. And so I came to you and to Michelle, and you were both in favor. So I told them, yeah, we would love that.
Okay, but I understand, a little birdie told me that they need a letter from the town.
I'm getting the letter over to them.
Yeah.
Two.
Perfect. That's all I'm thinking.
Absolutely say for sure that we want, with no equivocation, the red. Thank you.
But that would be, that would be purrier than what's...
I want the yellow though.
Yes, thank you.
I like the canary.
I need very clear. We want the red.
Yes.
Could I say just, I'm Andrea with the Lake County Senior Center. And after the proclamation, I just wanted to invite everyone to the Elder Abuse Awareness Day. We had one two years ago. It was very, very informative with the number of speakers and a nice meal. And it was just very well received. Of course, last year with COVID, we weren't able to do it. But we're really looking forward to the event and then just spreading the word to some of the, um, older adults in our community that don't really realize what elder abuse is and what it consists of and just to be, you know, their neighbors to be aware and that sort of thing. So June sixteenth at the senior center.
What time?
Right at, oh, well, actually it starts at eleven. And there will be a few vendors with some information that's appropriate, that sort of thing. There's a free lunch and, um, it should be really nice.
Yeah, free lunch. I'm intrigued.
Thank you so much. Is that everything? Okay, I will end the meeting if someone wants to.